Commissioner's Court Room, County Administration Building 200 South Texas Avenue, Suite 106. First item on the agenda is Pledge of Allegiance to the U.S. Texas Flag and Invocation. And Commissioner Alden will lead those.
Thank you. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day. We thank you for always, the blessings that you bestow upon us. Father, we ask that you be with us in times of difficulty and that, not only that we know that you were there, but that we know that your presence is what gets us through these things. Father, we honor and glorify you in times of joy, when we have success in our lives. Let us never forget that you are always with us and you will never leave us. We ask that you look over the lives of and that you protect those who protect us. We ask that you give us your vision and wisdom in order to effectively be leaders for the benefit of the citizens of Brazos County. We ask all these things in the name of your son, Jesus. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On our Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the U.S. Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you.
Second item on the agenda is call for citizens' input and our concerns. Hearing none, number three is presentation and discussion of Innovation Towers by Romero Galindo. Come up.
Good morning, Judge.
Come to the...
Good morning, Commissioners, Judge.
Morning.
Public large. My name is Ram Galindo. By way of establishing the bona fides of what I'm going to talk to you about today, I point out that about forty-five years ago, I began developing in Brazos County. And since then, we have accomplished quite a bit within the Hilton Hotel area and College Station, about a hundred and thirty acres, which are highly developed there, and about a thousand acres west of the railroad track in Bryan, which includes the West Villa Maria corridor, both sides, from the part of developed Bryan down to the border of College Station. Today, I'm here to talk about something else that is really exciting, and it has its origins about sixty years ago, when General Rutter, who was a great innovator, came here, decided to turn everything around and transform Texas A&amp;M from a small military college into the multiversity, which is now. Since those days, this community has become a leader, not just in the county or in the state, in the nation, nay, the whole world, with innovative new ways to do things that were all done the old way before, and the world has changed as a result. We have acquired a place in the world that is outsized to the size of our community. When you travel around the world and you see things that originate at A&amp;M, it is really revealing and puts you in places to where we are now. Considering all that background and seeing that it has become the product of the roots that were planted over the last sixty years, I would like to invite you to enter into my imagination and follow me with what I'm going to be showing you here. Bryan is a city that has about a hundred and sixty-five years of tradition. It runs down the remodeled part of the city, all the way down to College Station, connected by Texas Avenue and South College Avenue. It has brought change to itself by renovating downtown and becoming a financial center in the county. Texas A&amp;M, which all of you are very familiar with, but also takes a different view when it's looked at from the air, is where all these advancements are taking place. As we go through it, you'll recognize the features that it has and the history that it probably has for most of you, if not all of you. I came here as a young man in the early sixties, and I hardly recognized the place myself, but it has formed the characters that we'll be immortalizing with the buildings that we're going to build here and we're going to name after them. That's Kyle Field. Kyle Field remains the reason why most Aggies come back to support the university with the athletic activities that it shines on. My project is located about seven minutes away from Kyle Field, and it is located in the middle of subdivisions that are developing now, and that's exactly where it will go. The first building will come up first, and the second building will come up as soon as the first is sold out, and then the third. Upon completion of the third building, we're going to put a commercial hub in the middle, which will be the center for specialty restaurants and boutique stores. And when finished, we're going to have a project of five high-rise buildings that will define the skyline of Bryan College Station. This is really going to be a game changer in the way people live around here. It is going to be the home of those innovators that work in their silos in the university, isolated from each other, and they're going to come up here and meet and mix and turn this into a port of discovery, like in history, Venice and Lisbon and Palos, and even in our times, St. Louis and Spaceport Kennedy opened up new visions for the whole world. The project is located right overlooking Traditions, which is the big investment that all of the county made to make that area, where I've been working for the last forty-five years, a viable opportunity for this. This is a transformative lifestyle that is not existing in the county before, until now. It is a lock-and-leave project that eliminates a lot of it. So, we've cut the video by about three or four minutes to just give you the idea of what we're doing here. With that, I just want to point out that the taxes that will be generated for the county alone, when those buildings are finished, at the present rate, which is about forty-five cents per hundred-dollar valuations, in today's dollars, will represent about one point, more than one point two million dollars a year, new revenue that will come to you. That, I think, is worthy of note, and that's why I'm here today. While we do that, at the same time, and just as important as the increase in taxes, we're increasing the density of the urban area of the population, thereby eliminating the need to sprawl into the rural areas, demanding more roads, more bridges, more services outside. Judge was very kind to point that out to me, and I think that makes a synergy between our efforts on the county to try to get the tax base built in within the urban area of the county to diminish the burdening on the rural areas. Having said all that, I want to introduce to you an associate of mine, a friend of mine, who has been hand-to-hand with me since I started this business, and he helped me create the Municipal Utility District, which is how we had to start in the county, because neither Bryan nor College Station wanted to participate in what we're doing in the West Side. So, we had to form our own little proto-city and begin development by bringing our own water, buying water from the city and building our sewage treatment plant and our roads, our drainage systems and all that, which is now the West Side of town. Don Morrow was with me hand-to-hand during that work, and I'm going to ask him to say something to you that you all know in your heads, but I think he can say it in this particular time very powerfully. Don, would you come in, please? I know we have limited time, so we're trying to stay with you, darling.
Hello. For those of y'all that don't know me, my name is Don Morrow. I practiced law here in town for fourteen years, before I was called over to Austin to work in the legislature. And my family goes very deeply in Brazos County. We have five generations of Morrows who have lived in Brazos County, and I'm very proud of my roots here and growing up here. I'm one of the people who, probably not many of you in the room, can remember the centennial celebration of Bryan, when we had that great centennial celebration. But one of the things that I realized right away when I moved to Austin was that Austin, although it's, I think it's the eleventh-largest city in the United States now, really didn't have any roads that traversed the city from the east side to the west side. And it was a huge problem, because they had small roads and had allowed development all along the roads without much right-of-way, so they didn't have an opportunity to expand. So, they ended up having to build overhead roads at Ben White and 183. So, you have to go to either end of the city to get across the city with any degree of ease. And here in Brazos County, we have a real different situation, because we have University Drive that runs all the way across the county, and we have Villa Maria that runs all the way across the county. So, it's real easy to get from one side of the county to the other using either one of those two roads, when you're coming either from Houston and want to go across, or coming from Austin and want to go across. But what I want to emphasize to y'all today is my experience, I have a number of projects that I'm working on here in Brazos County now, and I drive over from Austin two or three times a week, every week. And what I've come to realize is that if I exit off of 47, coming in from Austin at Villa Maria, I can get actually onto the center of the A&amp;M campus faster than I can going all the way across to University Drive, or Raymond Stotzer Parkway, I think it's called now. But that's much easier because of traffic flows and because of the controlled intersection, both at the exit of 47 and at the 2818 exit. So, I could go all the way into College Avenue and cut across and be at the center of campus much faster. And what I want to ask y'all to do is to emphasize to the state that it's time now for Villa Maria to be improved all the way out to Highway 47. You know, it's, if you drive in from 47, you drive about a mile or so, maybe a little more than a mile, on a normal farm-to-market type road that has bar ditches on both sides. And then you come to the Arrowfit subdivision and Shirewood and Walmart and those areas, and you have controlled intersections and red lights and curb and gutter. And we would, I would like for that to be extended all the way out, because as I've realized, and as many more people are going to realize, the traffic flows on Villa Maria are both going to come substantial, especially as we build out our project and Traditions continues to grow. You're going to see substantially more traffic on Villa Maria, and I would like to encourage y'all to encourage the state officials in charge to invest their money wisely in Brazos County and to increase Villa Maria. Thank you all.
Thank you.
So, my closing statement would be then, Judge and Commissioners, that you see us approaching you as partners in the development of the county. We're not asking for the county to invest any money in our project. We're providing a lot more money to you, and what we want from you is to help define the roadway system, Villa Maria being a major part of it. Those organizations that will actually handle the funds act on the basis of inputs from the other civil organizations in town. And we wanted to ask you to be of great help in getting the moneymaker, the money handlers' decisions to focus on Villa Maria and getting it built while we're still doing this big investment, which I told you is going to be about a quarter billion dollars, billion with a B. Thank you so much again, and if there's no questions, I guess we'll move on.
Questions?
As always, your innovations in this community over the years have always been very far-reaching and thinking about our future, so I'm not surprised to have you here. Thank you for taking the time to make the presentation. Yes, we need advocacy from local community members. Don, with being able to have the State of Texas work with us, we have a really great local Tex. District Director right now, and of course, you're familiar with our Regional Mobility Authority that we've established and trying to work on that. However, we're running into some headwinds as far as being able to have an effective funding source for that and the ability to do that. So, advocacy as a community at large would be much welcomed, and I'd love the opportunity to visit with y'all in more detail about that in the future.
Well, thank you. We will make sure to make an appointment and call and come and visit.
Thank you.
Well, I appreciate you coming in and sharing with the Commissioner's Court. Potential project is a really fine, it's top of the, it's as good a project as you can see. So, I mean, you know, we discussed, the legislature's certainly put some caps on counties and cities, too, that we believe will certainly impact us in the future. And, you know, I mean, as we discussed, property taxes is really the biggest source of funding that county pays for all their operations, you know, about seventy percent. So, I don't know whether, I don't know where we can go from here, but I really am excited about the project, and we'll have those discussions.
Thank you, Judge. I just want to point out that that conversation that I had with you, when you were kind enough to attend to the first meeting that we had about this, really helped me point the direction in which we could establish partnerships with the civil organizations in town to get this accomplished. And you expressed to me the need that you have for funds to handle every increasing demand for services in the rural county, and I thought this makes the ideal situation. We provide funds from the urban developments here for you to do your job, but we do need that advocacy, that common advocacy that Steve so eloquently referred to. So, we will be in touch with you with more information also.
Okay. Thank you.
And you are asking that this court provide you with a proclamation, a resolution in support?
Yes, very much so, yeah. Because armed with that resolution, we can go to the Highway Department, we can go to the city, we can go to the state organizations that Don has contact with, and we can say the county supports this. And if we get the same attitude from the other organizations, I'm thinking we can get it done.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Okay, thank you all. Okay, we'll move on and consider and take action on Agenda Asps. 4 through 21. Number 4 is Proclamation 19-029, Recognizing and Welcoming the Brazos Valley Signor Memo Cangelosi.
May I save you and offer a motion to accept and approve?
I was fixing to assign this to Commissioner Catalina to read the rest.
I wanted to hear him read it. I was waiting for him to get to point three out.
Thank you, Commissioner. I needed that. Okay, a motion has been made to accept number four.
Approve.
Did I hear a second?
I ain't heard it yet. I second it.
Okay.
That was actually seconded.
Motion made.
Always the critic.
Motion made and seconded to approve number four. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None? So, motion carries, and I'm just glad, there wasn't anybody here to accept that today, was there?
I didn't recognize anyone.
The proclamation has got even...
I didn't accept it.
No, you're going to read it for us.
Well, I think it's great that we've got, you know, we think of ourselves as a global community to some extent.
We are.
But I mean, this is the opportunity for us to, you know, evidence that. I think this is great.
I think it falls in line with the project that we just heard about and puts us further on the map. So, we salute these projects and recognitions.
Okay. We've already voted, correct?
Yes.
All right. Thank you all. Number five is approval of following job descriptions: Temporary Attendant, 1040 Hours, Class Code 0832, Position 12, Expletive Position Complex, and B, Risk Safety Coordinator, Class Code 2215 for Risk Management. Move approval.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None. Motion carries. Number six is request from District Attorney Jarvis Parsons for a payment authorization for quality forensic toxology in the amount of $550 for blood analysis. The purchase order was not obtained in advance.
Move approval.
Second. Motion made and seconded. Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None. Motion carries. Number seven is payment authorization to Kronberg's Flag and Flag Poles in the amount of $20 for shipping charges on flags to Boonville Heritage Park.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None. Motion carries. Number eight is order dividing and creating and extending and combining one election precinct due to City of Bryan annexation pursuant to Section 42.007 of the Texas Election Code. Move approval.
Second.
Okay. Aye, Dave. Motion made and seconded to approve A through J. Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None. Motion carries. Number nine is permission to advertise for RFP 20-001, Legal Representation of Indigent Juvenile. Move approval.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None. Motion carries. Number 10 is contract renewal with Madison County for provision of juvenile pre-adjudication detention services.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None. Motion carries. Number 11 is Amendment 1 of Contract 19-021 for the Design of Jail Kitchen Expansion and Remodel with Trainer HL.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None. Motion carries. Number 12 is approved of Service Contract CIP 19-625, Plumbing Repairs to Brazos County IT and Tax Office Buildings with Action Plumbing in the Amount of $18,345.
Move approval.
Second. Motion made and seconded. Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None. Motion carries. Number 13 is approved of Contract 20-005 with Lexus Nexus for County Attorneys.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None. Motion carries. Number 14 is request permission to enter private properties owned by John and Betty Helfelt, Gerald and Lillian Nunez, and Jeremy and Jessica Richmond on I and GN Road. County will lower the grade of the existing driveways to tie the new grade for I and GN sites located precinct one.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None. Motion carries. Number 15 is request permission to enter private property owned by Lynn P. Thomas on Dick Elliott Road to remove livestock shed being bisected by acquisition, and also to relocate oilfield entrance and service road owned by Lone Star Resources. This works needed in order to construct a bridge on Dick Elliott Road sites located precinct two. Move approval.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None. Motion carries. Number 16, Acceptance Special Warranty Deal from Lynn Karen Thomas for .08 of one acre of land to be used for the installation of bridge on Dick Elliott Road in precinct two. Move approval.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None. Motion carries. Number 17 is Budget Journal Entries FY 18/19, 6060029 through 060030.
Move approval.
Second. Motion made and seconded. Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None. Motion carries. Number 18 is Tax Refund Application for the Following.
I move approval of A and B.
Second. Motion made and seconded. A and B. Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None. Motion carries. Number 19 is Budget Amendments, Budget Amendments FY 18/19, 38.1 through 38.9.
Move approval.
Second. Motion made and seconded. Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None. Motion carries. Number 20 is Personnel Change of Status, and I need to remove Monica Sauceda from the Risk Management Division.
I move approval of the personnel change of status with the exception of Monica...
Sauceda.
Sauceda.
Second. Motion made and seconded. Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None. Motion carries. Number 22 is Juvenile Director's Report on Detention Population.
You missed one.
I hadn't seen Linda.
Payment of Claims.
Payment of Claims. Oh, I'm sorry. I checked the wrong one. Payment of Claims, Claim to be Paid by Brazos County, 801-5987 through Claim Number 801-6250.
Move approval.
Second. Motion made and seconded. Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None. Motion carries. Now, we go to Juvenile Director's Report on Detention Population. She's not here, so we'll go to Sheriff's Report on Inmate Population. Wayne.
Good morning, Judge. Commissioner, 661 with RP, 550 men, 111 women, 54 on electronic monitoring, 19 on...
Okay. Thank you, Wayne.
Yes, sir.
Number 24 is Announcement of Interest Items and Possible Future Agenda Topics. Hearing none. Number 25 is Call for Citizens' Input and Our Concerns. Patrick.
Judge, Commissioners, I'll tell you, usually I come up here and I tell y'all how the great work that frontline probation officers are doing. Well, let me tell you, Linda, Linda Ricketson, Department Head, the head administrator there, but she's on the front lines, too. Yesterday, her and I were going back into the juvenile detention facility to talk to a kid, because he refused to come to court. He's got some severe mental issues, but he would not get dressed, and Linda, you know, Linda's right in there with me, trying to talk to him, trying to coax him. He wouldn't have put a smock on, but he had, he was covered up, you know, but Linda's one of those administrators that she's on the front lines, too, working with the kids individually. I know yesterday, day before or two, she was talking to all the kids back there, and so she, she really has her hand on the, on the pulse beat of what's going on. So, you know, sometimes administrators get kind of a little bit removed from, from what some of their staff are doing, but she's, she's in there working with the kids directly herself. So, I just want to, I know she's not here today, but I appreciate the hard work she does, and just want to share that with y'all. And the proclamation you had earlier, I'm traveling to Pojerella, Sicily next month sometime, and I'd be happy to carry that along, too. But that, I'll tell you, that region of Sicily, you think about, it's very rocky and the soil's kind of infertile, but you could only imagine what my ancestors and Mr. Catalina's ancestors and others that came from that area, you know, came when they came to the Brazos Bottom, the... they came to the Brazos Bottom, the topsoil down here, and the growing conditions must have been like, like heaven compared over there. So, you can see how industrious and they have become and did in farming here, and it must have been like, like heaven coming here to Brazos Valley from over there. But, but thank y'all for giving me a few minutes to speak, Judge.
Okay.
And thank you.
Thank you, Patrick. Any other citizen input and our concern? Aye.
Judge, Commissioners, my name's Kenny Wiley. I'm a reporter at The Eagle, and I want to lift up that a reporter coming up here and speaking is unusual. We try not to draw attention to ourselves, but I merely wanted to say that I moved here and started working at The Eagle exactly one year ago today, and I just wanted to thank all of you, and many in the room, that I've worked with on stories, for working with me, for returning my calls. That's always nice, and just wanted to say thank you. It's been a great year, and I'm excited to keep going. That's all I wanted to share.
You're not going anywhere.
I'm not, that's not this announcement. No, yeah.
Thank you, Kenny. It's great working with you.
Thank you, Kid. Any other citizen input and our concern? Hearing none, we adjourn. Thank y'all.